Hello, my friends. This is Andy coming to you live from California for the Andy Falco Show. I know you're not used to me coming in after the countdown, but when I have a guest, I come in first and kind of let you know what we're going to be doing. But I have Leandra Blades coming up. You've seen us talking a few times at some of the local rallies for Save Our Children rally that we were just at last week, and another one supporting our law enforcement. So you may have seen it, except for truly loud there. So we thought it'd be much better to talk about her candidacy for the local school board in a more quiet setting. So we actually hear each other talking and hear her answers to my questions. It'll be much, much better. And since the last time we talked, even more has happened. Schools, at least for me and her, are starting tomorrow. And I'm excited to get her take on some of the things that are coming up. I've had conversations with other parents and some of the issues that they're already going through, because some other schools in other states and other cities have already started. And people have contacted me because they know I have a history of dealing with homeschooling, which did not go well for my children. And then I got my kids into public school, and now they're in public school. Now I have to homeschool my kids. It's a very strange thing. But what I want to do before I get into or bring Leandra on is I want to just really quickly talk a couple about the sponsors. And I'm gonna do this really fast today, because I want to make sure and give enough time to us to talk about this really important thing in regard to school. But go to todayshappycoffee.com, get some of the best coffee on the planet. It's not just coffee. It helps you with weight loss, because it has an appetite suppressant. It has something called nootropics or dose, which is happy hormones, the dopamines, the oxytocin, the serotonin, and the endorphins. I remembered them all. And it boosts those. And so it just gives you a much happier day. And boy, did I need my happy coffee today, like much of you. And today's seed oil is a great seed oil. It's one of the best on the planet. There's no THC. It has liposome technology, which allows it to get into your system. It's made by Vaseo, one of the top 50 healthcare companies in the world. Vaseo also has other wellness products, and you get there by going to todaysvaseo.com. All right, I got through our sponsors there. All right, so we're gonna be bringing on Leandra. We're gonna learn first a little bit about her and why she's running, and then we'll get into some of the more important subject matters. If you know anybody that's in the Yorba Linda area of our schools of Orange County, share this with your friends, because this is important that they see who Leandra is and what her platform is and why she thinks it's important that you elect her for the school board. And we would just appreciate it. I would appreciate it, because I need her in our school board personally. All right, right after this, we'll bring on Leandra Blades. Hello, my friend. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Very good. This is so funny, kind of interviewing you in this way, because we're always like trying to yell. I get kind of horsed trying to interview and that kind of stuff. It is tons of fun, by the way, going to those rallies and being there. You are the organizer for the rallies. That's right, huh?
That's right. I have a team that helps me out. But yeah, started this Yorba Linda and Centered Group and kind of just went from there. Have a team now behind me. We have lots of shirts being sold for Back the Blue. We have lots of stuff has come from just, you know, starting a rally, having a Back the Blue rally. It's just really turned into something else. It's really exciting.
Yeah, every time we do one of those things, it grows and grows and grows. And I was telling everybody during our interview that, well, prior to us interviewing last time, was that it seemed like a lot more people were honking as they were going by. It was almost like the Republican National Convention just really pumped people up. So that was a really good thing.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
What do you got? Spider webs around you? It's okay. We got Rich Moore coming to us from St. Louis, Missouri. Well, moved to Yorba Linda before November, so you can vote for Leandra in the school board. So Leandra, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself? I wanted you to do it, because I think that you can have a message of why people should get to know you and why you should be trusted with our children.
Okay. Well, I am a retired police officer. I served from the time I was 20 until about the age of 33. And then I retired, hadn't had the medical retirement. And so after that, I was kind of just a stay-at-home mom, you know, looking for something to do. I became a police officer, because I really felt like I could protect people. I wanted to protect people. I've always been kind of outspoken and bold. And since I was a little kid, maybe eight or nine years old, I said, wow, I really wanna, I thought this is what I want to do with my life. And so second I turned 20, I was in the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy. And then I went downtown to the jail, spent a few years in the jail before I lateraled. And then I finished my career. And then so it was kind of, you know, it was a great time. It was a great job. I loved every single second of it. And just lately, I've been kind of not an observer in the schools, but I would say, because I'm a room mom, I do a lot of volunteer work there. You know, I'm sitting in the library doing pancake breakfast, you know, jog-a-thons, anything that a room mom would do or anything that you do to help out the library or in the classroom. You know, you kind of sit around and you observe. My observation is just, you know, okay, things are going good, things are going bad, you know, things are changing, whatnot. I did a lot of coaching. I played softball, really competitively growing up. So when I was given three boys, I, you know, obviously wanted to coach my kids. And so I said, well, why can't I coach boys? So I coached boys, you know, baseball, soccer. So I've kind of been really a part of our community for the last eight years. And then I was approached, you know, so really how the story goes is our governor is gruesome. So when the recall was about to start, what happened was they were looking for volunteers. They were looking for all kinds of, you know, help. And so I volunteered, just signed up to help. And then they called me and they said, would you be the Yorba Linda chair for the recall? So I said, sure. Well, as I was trying to post on all of the different websites, whatnot, to just show where am I gonna be, what's, you know, what's happening? Because in my opinion, I have three kids. I married my husband's a firefighter, so he's gone for days at a time. So if I'm going to give myself to a cause, I want to make it, you know, worthwhile for me and, you know, for the time away from my family and worthwhile to the cause. So I just wanted to be, get as many signatures as I could when I went out. So I tried to post it on the local social media, on these local buzz sites, whatever, and they rejected me. They said, no, we don't post politics. But they were posting if, you know, somebody agreed that they wanted masks, you know, masks would be posted. Black Lives Matter rallies and Black Lives Matter subjects were posted. So it kind of seemed a little hypocritical. So I was sitting here wondering how I could, you know, best utilize my time outside of the house getting signatures for the cause. And I thought, heck, I'm gonna make a page. So I did, and it's grown. We're getting sometimes, I mean, today we had like, I looked at it, my cousin and there's a few other people have taken over it as admins, because my cousin just, you know, he's far removed from everything, so he just kind of looks at everything very fairly. But yeah, he accidentally hit the confirm all members today, all 104 of them that had popped up since this morning. So yeah, so started this page and yeah, we've just kind of rocking and rolling since then. Started doing the rallies. And then I was approached by a group who said, hey, we're looking for somebody bold. We're looking for someone who will stand up for our kids, you know, you being a former officer. And obviously, you're not afraid to stand up and to speak your mind. So would you consider it? So I prayed about it, you know, I researched, talked to a lot of people, because I really want to know what I was getting myself into. And researched the topics, and then I just felt like, yes, I'm gonna do this. I'll do this, you know? We have to try.
Great. Well, this is, I always want to remind the audience that's watching, we have several people watching right now from YouTube and Facebook and Twitter and Twitch. But this is good for everybody to watch, because I think that the subject matter of what's happening in our public schools is important for everybody. But in particular, if there's anybody that knows somebody that lives in Yorba Linda, California, in particular, if you could share this with them, either through Messenger or on one of their social medias, that would be awesome, because anything they need to hear what Leandra stands for and that type of stuff. And I want to know what the number of conservative people that are on the school board here, especially in Orange County, as opposed to either independents or liberals, what's that number, do you think?
Well, from what I've been told, it's four to one Democrat and then Republican. However, from my understanding is that the Orange County GOP won't endorse the Republican, because he takes money from the unions. So.
So we call him a rhino?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm gonna show you something. So I'm gonna show you something right now. And the reason I want to know that, because there's, shoot, why is her name escaping me? Shannon from The Story, Shannon, shoot, I can't remember her name, on Fox News, she was interviewing, what's that?
Shannon Green.
Yeah, well, no, the other one, McCollum. That's who was actually doing it, McCollum. She was interviewing Jack Brewer, who is an NFL football player, but he does a lot of work in public schools and that kind of stuff. Well, he was being interviewed, and they brought up an article with the Wall Street Journal. And it's not so much about school choice that I wanted to talk to you about, but we can get into that if you want to. But it's about this quote from the Wall Street Journal. I'm gonna read you the quote here and show the people out in the audience. It says, "Parents are also discovering the woke public political bias that passes for education in too many schools." "In Philadelphia, a public school teacher tweeted his concern that conservative parents listening in are my chief concern. School choice is the real civil rights issue of our time, and the GOP deserves credit for making it a marquee part of 2020." And I've seen other things that are being talked about, that some teachers or some schools don't want the parents listening in on what's happening as the children are being taught in their home, because they have to do online schooling. And they said, the parents have to either sign something and they can't share what's being taught. Why? Why? Why can't we listen in? Do you have any insight as to why somebody in Philadelphia or any other school district would be concerned about a conservative listening to what children are being taught?
The only insight I can have is they're telling our kids something that we don't want them to hear. I mean, why else? Why else?
What are some of the difficulties in dealing with people that are trying to bring in some of the transgender teachings and the sex education that isn't appropriate for children that are, you know, first grade, kindergarten, second grade for that matter? Because these are some of the issues that are beginning to be brought in. How are we gonna address that? Is it, do we just need to look to the school board to kind of help solve some of that stuff? Or how can parents be involved?
Well, I think if we have an outcry, like right now, a lot of the stuff comes from state. But I think a lot of it has, you know, like elections have consequences. So if we, you know, elect these people into the state, and it's a hard spot, California's in, it's a really hard spot. So it comes from the state, but from what I understand is that the school board can water stuff down. And there is ways that you can be in compliance with the law, but you can, you know, adjust the material accordingly, you know, to the district. So I just think that teaching kindergartners five, six, seven-year-olds this stuff, this material at such a young age, when you probably even haven't had the birds and the bees talk with your kid. I mean, we don't have it, you know, maybe till later than this. And so for a stranger to be teaching this stuff to our kids and then not knowing what is being taught to our kids, I just think that that's just a dangerous, it's just a dangerous thing. We, you know, parents need control, and we need to bring back the parents' choice and the parents' control to our schools. It seems like the parents are being shoved to the side. A lot of, a lot of things that are happening is that, you know, some laws are coming down that says that, you know, an eight-year-old can leave school if they, you know, want to have a sex change. And they can go get counseling, seek hormones, and these hormones can actually sterilize the kids. And they won't tell the parents that they've left at eight years old, at eight years old. I mean, we won't even let kids get a tattoo till they're 18, because it permanently scars your body. But yet at eight years old, we're willing to let kids go and get hormone therapy without parents' permission. At 12, someone can be taken to have an abortion without their parents' knowledge and without their parents' consent. And I just think it just doesn't make a lot of sense. And why are we keeping the parents out of this? Like, what is the purpose of this? Like, where is it? It almost is like that old saying, like where people, you know, a while ago, you know, years ago, you're like, oh, don't let the state's trying to take over and raise your kids. And you're kind of saying, well, like, what do you mean? How are they gonna do that? Well, here we are. Here we are, when you're removing the parents from the equation. Here we are.
You are so right, because it wasn't maybe a month ago or two, a month and a half ago, that the church I go to, Calvary Chapel, Chino Hills, had put out a flyer, and they were handing it out. And they said, you gotta call your senators and your representatives. This bill is gonna go through, the very one you talked about, being able to give children hormone treatments at eight years of age. And it was almost like, I think somebody's misread something, like, that's not possible. I mean, this is like somebody just kind of going off the track here. Maybe the church I'm going to has gone a little wacky. But in fact, it's true. It is a bill that actually passed the first round. Actually, they weren't gonna put it up. It got pulled, and then they put it back up, and then it got voted on. And we have idiots in California, politicians in California that passed the bill, or at least the first phase of the bill. And it was like, what the heck? I'm totally dumbfounded. And I've seen a lot of stuff. You and I, as police officers, have seen a lot of crazy stuff. This is beyond some of the crazy stuff I've seen. And it's unbelievable that that is possible.
Yes, we have heard a lot of crazy stuff. And this is like, this kind of tops some of it, you know? It really does.
Yeah. I love a couple of comments here. Christina says, "I don't have kids, but that makes me concerned." And I am fearful when I hear it. Yeah. Well, I have kids. It is. It's AB2218, so sneaky. Yep, absolutely. Before I forget, I want to make sure and get this up. Carol, who's a friend of mine, her and I used to work at Anaheim Police Department together, have her, which is you, join Lake Norman Conservatives. Many members are in California. I don't know if you know about that one, but she's very politically conservative and sound in her information. Trust me. Very good information right there. And so kind of back to our topic, the thing about parents, right? Parents have a job. My job is to teach my kids the things that I believe in, right? Whether I'm Christian or Titanic or Buddhist or whatever, that is my job. It is not the school's job to teach these things. My children were being homeschooled by their mother when we were married. It's a long story. But it didn't go as well as I had hoped. So when we divorced, I discovered that my children were significantly behind in their education. So anyway, I get the kids in school, and my only concern was if they could spell, if they could write, if they could do math, if they could socialize properly, if they knew the US history, which the school that I go here, Golden Elementary, did a great job with their US history plays and learning about the history of our country and then world history. And I've been very happy with that. But this other stuff that seems to be coming in, that is my job. It is not the school's job. And that really is, what's it gonna take away from? If you're teaching stuff, what are you gonna remove? Right? What are you taking away? Are you taking US history? It really is a crazy thing. I don't even know if I have a question here, but it's just like.
I have talked to a teacher about this, and they said that, well, 100% of, you know, what you're supposed to teach, you only are going to get in 70% probably in that school year of the 100% that, you know, you're supposed to be teaching. So my question has been, if you have someone who really wants this ethnics curriculum, this ethnic studies, this Black Lives Matter curriculum, this transgender stuff getting into the school, how much more are the kids going to lose from what their standard curriculum was supposed to be for them to also teach on this extra stuff? I really don't understand why we're not just teaching math, science, history, you know, and just sticking to the basics, PE, drama, like your electives. I mean, and I know the reason why, because if they don't filter it in through the schools, they know that we at home are not gonna teach it. I'm not gonna teach this to my kid. You're not gonna teach it to your kid. My friends aren't gonna teach it to their kids. So this is the only way to make sure that the kids are going to be able, you know, to get this in. And the terrible part of this too is, is that if your kids don't agree with it, because this is already happening in school, where people are being failed on, you know, papers, they're being chastised in class, they're being ridiculed for not believing the way the teacher thinks. But if you're forced in this curriculum, and like, say you're in high school, and you're looking for a college scholarship, you're looking for, you know, good grades to get yourself into college. And if you don't perform the way that these teachers want you to perform and say what they want you to say, what's gonna happen to you? You know, what if they fail you in the class and that ruins, you know, potential scholarship? It ruins your grades. It ruins whatever it is, because you're not conforming to how they want you to think. And I think that's the scary part.
Yeah, I mean, bullying is an issue of its own, right? In regard to maybe how you look, if you're overweight and too skinny or have a, you know, your nose may be looking different than somebody else, or maybe a speech impediment. I mean, there's enough of that going on. It really does seem that the, you know, because my son has already gotten into arguments with people in regard to conservatism and liberalism. And they're saying, well, you know, Donald Trump has raped 100 women and is a criminal. And so they're having, and I said, he's 14. I have three sons. The one that was in the argument was a 14-year-old. And I just go, what did he just say? And so we had a little, and so now I'm having to have conversations about this guy. He's just, he called me a name, and he showed me the text where he got this name. And you're adding a completely other component, and now they're seeing people are completely unhinged. You can't even have a convention and leave the convention without being attacked and screamed in the face. And I really do think that these issues that are not necessary in our school are really going to increase bullying and the opportunity for children to argue and fight, because they're seeing semi-grown adults, and I only say semi, because apparently they're adults, but they're acting like children, screaming in people's faces and threatening to kill them and flipping people off that are 90 years old. I mean, this is just really horrible, bad behavior.
Right. And the thing is too, is I watch my kids grow up, and they don't see race. You know, I don't see race. My friends are, you know, different religions, different colors, different whatever. It's the media who's saying you sees race, and it's these groups that are saying that we see race. Like, I think I told you at the rally the other day, last weekend, and then it happened again on Saturday night. You know, people are back. It's hot as heck, you know, so there's lots of kids in the pool. And I've got multi-religions, multi, you know, multi-races back there. These kids don't see it. They don't see it. And so I think that by having this curriculum enter the schools and by forcing kids to see it, that's where our problem's gonna lie. And I really just believe, you know what, what we teach at home is important. Our values and our morals and stuff should be taught in the home. If I have a friend who's a different religion than me or a different, you know, whatever, and I know this, I'm gonna be respectful to her when her kids come to my house. I'm not gonna force my religious beliefs on that child. I'm not gonna force anything on them. So why is it different? If I have a respect for my friends and for my kids, for, you know, my kids' friends' parents, like, why would we allow us to go on in school? Why aren't we saving this? I mean, and the answer is, we aren't, it's because they know we will not teach this agenda in our homes. We won't do it.
Right. You know, one thing, and I want to move on from the subject. We've talked a lot about, it's really big right now. So I think it's important we have this discussion, and I want to know, you know, that this is one of those things that's gonna be addressed as a school board member. So this is also an interview for me to make sure that you're gonna be somebody that I want to vote for. And you are, so far. But the subject matter in regard to race, like you said, our children are not, they're like conservatives. We don't see race. I know that people find that very strange. I bring that up to liberals all the time. They go, you guys are racist. I don't even know what you're talking about, because we really, like, if you are good at something, you are good at something. We're not gonna, you know, look at it because, well, you're kind of black, and so it must be better. There's not that thing. The liberals seem to put a label on everything. And that's how I want my school to be. That's the point I'm getting to. I want my school to be that this is just, we are a mixture of all kinds of people, right? Indians from India, Indians from, you know, that are Native Americans. We have Hispanics. We got, you know, blacks and blacks from Haiti and blacks from Africa. And it's just who we are. And that's what makes our country fantastic. It is way better than the other country. We're the least racist country in the world. That's what I want taught in our schools. By bringing this stuff in, in a very controversial subject matter, is not gonna help that. There's nothing wrong with Black History Month. I enjoy learning, you know, about some of the great black leaders that have come through the years. The first millionaire was a black woman. And I didn't know that. I don't mind being taught that. I'm not even concerned about that. It's that trying to teach our children that the nuclear family is something horrible, right, is what I don't want. That law enforcement is systematically racist, which it's not, that we need to get rid of cops, because they're horrible people, and we need to release, reward criminals, and punish law enforcement. It's all part of the BLM points of view. That is what I'm worried about. So I want to make sure it's clear. I'm not against, like, black history or any of the great black. Again, I don't look at it that way. They are great Americans, whether they're black, white, Hispanic. They're great Americans. I want to know about great Americans. I don't care about the other crap. Sorry.
This is the thing too, is my middle son, he watched the Jackie Robinson video. And so what number, you know, that movie that came out years ago? What number has he worn since then? 42. He's wanted to be 42, you know, since then, because it was inspired. And, you know, you ask him, well, you know, what inspires you for 42? His courage. He stood up for himself. He stood up for what he thought was right. Okay, great answer. And that's the thing. I really think too, if, I think when people say that cops are systemic racism and all of this nonsense that they say, I really feel like people should go sit in a patrol car, and they should go out, because when they say that to us, we sit here and we go, we have seen so many races, and we have seen so much good, and we have seen so much bad. And it doesn't matter what race you are. It's what your heart is. And I know that's kind of like, oh, the cliche, that's what your heart is. No, no, no. That is true. It is how you're raised. It's what your morals are, and it's how your heart is. It is not the color of your skin, because every single color does stuff wrong. White people, black people, brown people, Asian people, we've seen everybody do things wrong. It is about the heart, and it's about having morals, and it's about being a good person, and it's about raising good people.
Yep. You know, it's interesting that you brought up about your son and wearing the number 42, is that when I was a kid and was role-playing football, I was OJ Simpson. So just so you know. Oh, that wasn't so good, after all. I didn't think about that. One more question on the subject matter, and we'll move on. Is the Black Lives Matter agenda and the 1619 Project being taught in the California school districts and even nationally? Do you know that?
You know, it's completely working its way into there, and then maybe in the next year, it's probably gonna be fully implemented, is what I'm being told.
Okay. So I want to get back on to learning, learning the three Rs. What do you know about how Common Core is going to move forward in our schools? I've tried to help my kids, because, you know, the last couple of months of last school year, as we were trying to do this stuff at home, and my 12-year-old was asking me, Dad, I don't understand this math problem. And I go, and she goes, and I go, I have no idea what you're doing. That makes no sense whatsoever, what it is you're doing. I go, what happened to just going like 2 plus 2? Like, you're making little, I mean, I don't even know what they're doing. It is very strange. Yeah, what do you know about Common Core and what's the move on that, if any?
Well, I know that Florida has stated they're trying to get rid of Common Core. It's around here in California. But, you know, I just don't understand, like, why are we trying to put a broken system into kind of a semi-broken system already? I mean, it just doesn't, it seems like we've completely broken everything by doing this. As far as the math goes, I do remember when my youngest kid was in first grade, and we came home, and it was about carrying the number, well, in our terms, it was, you know, you're carrying the number to the next column, whatnot. I can't remember what they were calling it. But I just remember the teacher said, now, if you go home, your parents are gonna tell you it's carrying, but that's wrong. That's not what we call it. We call it this. And I, so I was sitting there, I was listening, I go, why would somebody say that to our kids? Like, it's wrong. No, why don't you say your parents are old? This is, you know, this is what they said 20 years ago when your parents were in school, you know, and this is what we call it now. But it kind of, like, right then, that was strange to me, because it already kind of undermined us, even in first grade, that, you know, well, your parents are wrong if they tell you this. So when we talk about the Black Lives Matter and the transgender and all this stuff that they're infiltrating in there, if we're teaching them stuff at home, and then they're counteracting it at school and saying that we're wrong, like, what's the purpose there? Like, why are we doing this? And I think that's huge. I do think Common Core, I think it's terrible. I don't think that the kids are getting any smarter. I mean, we've pretty much said it's a failure. They're, you know, we're what, 49th or 50th in California out of, you know, the United States? It's obviously not working. I would love to get it out. I would love to figure out. I would love to get it out. I would love to figure out. I've been kind of researching and talking to a lot of people. How can we get it out? Can you just get it out of a school district and maybe start from there and go bigger? There's a lot of people who are really on to this movement where they're saying, man, like, let's really get behind this and protect our kids and get this out. Get what is not working and get it out. So I feel like if I get elected in there, I'm going to have a lot of support and probably, you know, and you get motivated people. When you start motivating people for change, we do great things.
You know, one of the things that I want to talk to you a little bit about the process of running for something like this and that you, you know, people get comfortable. Right? We we've seen, we see that in in Washington DC. All the politicians, even the Republicans are comfortable in their in their shenanigans that they're, right? Either being lazy and pretending they're doing something and paid for it, right? And and being able to take vacations on the government. And they just get complacent and and that's the way it is. I I, you and I both have been in government work and we see it, have seen it all the time. And it is no different once you get into politics. As you're coming in as a person that wants to probably make some changes or fix them stuff, it seems to me you may get attacked along the way. Has have you already seen that or do you anticipate that?
I've seen it and I anticipate more. And so far, I, so far, it's been like lies, slander. I mean, you know what? If the PTA presidents in my area want to text their families and tell them to run for one opponent and not me because I'm racist. Because, you know, some, like a personal event, they're completely, completely lying about and misconstruing events. Just anything, they're just looking, you know, they're just looking for anything. They're not hitting me on any of anything on my platform. Well, they're hitting me to call me racist because they said if I don't support Black Lives Matter, I'm racist, which I'm sorry, I don't support support a Marxist organization. I'm support the Marxist thought. I don't support it. I don't support what they stand for. Do I support black people? Absolutely. Do I support Mexican people, Asian people? Absolutely, I support them. Absolutely. But yes, been hit hard. So what was it? The PTA presidents, people on my campaign page. But you know who it is? It is one of my opponent supporters who try to hit me daily. But then I'm getting a lot of Black Lives Matter people infiltrating. And they're just, you know, you're racist, you're racist, you're racist. But, you know, I've got thick skin. I mean, what were we called in the field all the time? You know, you're making arrests on someone and, you know, you're you're awful. No matter what color you're resting, you're just terrible. So you're kind of used to the comments, but I I think what, I think the probably the worst thing, and we're kind of looking into it a little bit as to, because PTA and PTSA, they cannot, they cannot, they'll lose, you know, they'll lose some funding and they'll lose their status with the IRS for promoting politics like this. Someone just sent that over to me today. So I'm kind of looking into, you know, what can be done about certain things because, I mean, we've been across the line. You're expecting, you know, I expected because I knew the group and I had kind of watched and I, you know, like, I read, I read a lot. I research a lot. So I knew what to expect. And I knew that coming out against this curriculum and wanting to return to the traditional curriculum and giving parents choice back, I knew that this is going to be upsetting to the group that's trying to infiltrate it in the schools. I knew that. So I expected the attacks. I had researched the people, the some of the key players that are trying to get this in. And I had heard what they do. You know, they've gone to rallies, back the blue rallies and harassed, you know, the people at the rallies. So obviously, if I'm going to go out against what their, you know, goal for the school is, I knew I was going to get harassed as well and attacked. But you know what? Not once, not one, not one thing has been true. It's been so like ridiculous that, you know, you just kind of sit here and go, okay, you know, all right, is that the best you got? Okay. So, you know, you got to be tough in this thing and especially to to come out against this, you know, we have to be, we have to be strong and it's a way to silence, like, people who are, you know, I didn't really know a lot was going on today because it's so busy, just, you know, getting stuff ready at different places. But, you know, people who are my supporters that are putting out facts are getting attacked. You know, they're they're posting, you know, facts, they're posting, you know, I guess Facebook posts is what they told me, and they're asking questions on my opponent's campaign page, where what her Black Lives Matter stance is. And they're getting deleted from the campaign page. And then they're also getting reported to Facebook as harassment. So two people today for posting about an opponent's campaign stance, you know, who her affiliations are with. It's all, it's all being, you know, they're reporting these people as harassment and they're getting, you know, some Facebook jail. And so then you have to just kind of ask yourself.
Yeah, you know, what's interesting about this whole thing, it's what what happened to running on what it is that you can do, right? And what your strengths are and what, how you're going to benefit a parent that has children in schools, instead of, instead of running on how horrible and racist the other person is. That's not telling me who, I mean, it is telling me who you are. You're a nasty spineless person because you're you're saying horrible things about somebody else without knowing any facts and you're lying. But let's just run on what you, what it is that you can do, like, don't get and don't get caught up in, you know, talking, calling other people names. There's certain things that want to come out of my mouth and I'm trying to hold them back.
Even just, even just like right now, something just popped up on my screen that says that candidate supporters are now looking up everybody's Facebook pages and saying, threatening to call their employers and report them.
Jeez.
So, I mean, this is the thing is, you know what? I mean, we need, we need to, we need to go back to, you know, I'm running on a platform. If you don't agree with it, that's fine. Then then go don't agree with it in the ballot box. Okay?
Right.
And then, or we can debate this civilly. But this whole thing, I had this happen to me as well. And I unfriended the person because I think I call, we were in, we were talking about obviously a certain subject and it was, I I referred to somebody as an illegal immigrant. So somebody from another state didn't like that comment, went through my Facebook page and said that they were going to call my employer and basically try to get me fired because I called somebody an illegal immigrant and they didn't agree with it. I mean, this is cancel culture to the finest. And what we're seeing in this campaign right now, which is, man, it's just really heated up today. It's just cancel culture. Like, what, where, where, how, where is the respect for, you know, where's the respect for my platform, just as I can respect your platform and we should all be able to discuss it, the pros and cons? And you know what, too? There could be a way to meet in the middle. You know, if parents, if parents really, really feel strongly about the Black Lives Matter curriculum or whatnot, who's to say that we, there can't be some offerings for those parents that really, really believe in it? You know, I mean, or or whatnot, but to to blanket our whole school system with this, you know?
Absolutely. I agree. I remember a teacher, a couple of teachers, I think, were at one of the rallies and somebody came by and took pictures of them and and tried to get them in trouble with the school because they were at a rally, like, they were, they had an American flag. How horrible is it to be carrying an American flag? That is really racist and a horrible thing.
Thing is, though, that people don't realize is that on the other side, there was some, there were some people in the school district who worked for the school district who were wearing Black Lives Matter shirts that had signs that said F Trump. Were they reported? No. There has to be a mutual respect on both sides for all of us to be able to to be able to have our freedom of speech. That's what America is about.
Absolutely. All right. So I just, I don't want to make it too long because I want people to watch the whole thing. I I've learned that when I go my hour and a half sometimes, that people say, that was really long. And only my really close friends stick on for an hour and a half. But I want this to be able to be shared and shown to people so people can see who you are. So before we sign off, I know that I, I, this is for me. And I asked the questions that I'm interested in. Is there anything that I missed that you want to talk about that I didn't ask as a question or that you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I think we hit a lot on the subject. Black lives, you know, the Black Lives Matter, transgender, all this radical curriculum. It, you know, it's an important thing and, you know, it should be discussed. It really should be discussed and parents should be made aware of what's going on. And there should be, there should be discussion. And I really kind of feel like it's been, it's been kind of thrown into our schools very sneaky, you know, ethnics. Whatever, you know, the ethnic studies and whatnot. It's not true. I mean, if we're going to put something into our curriculum, it should be bold. This is what your kids are going to be taught. This is what, you know, even the, some of the like the school rallies, they're not really rallies. Some of these events are like really inappropriate. And the parents don't know that this is being told, you know, where a school rally for us was like, you know, the band playing and the cheerleaders and announcing sports team or whatnot. It's got a completely different, different route. So we really need to ask more at this time of our administrators. If they have a rally set, what is the rally information? Can parents attend? Like, what is going on here? And then as far as the Zooms, I mean, I don't want to like infringe on my kids' learning, but absolutely, I'm going to be listening. Absolutely. Because we need to listen. We need to know what's being said. I I find it highly inappropriate that police officers are required to wear the body cams at all times. But yet our teachers have an issue with the parents listening in. Maybe we should put body cams on teachers too. And maybe we aren't able to observe everything, but maybe we can listen or we can, you know, do whatever. But you can't make, you know, some people so responsible for their actions for a twelve hour shift. And then our school teachers who are teaching our children doesn't have that same responsibility. And it's okay for them to, for us not to listen in. I just don't agree with it. So maybe that's my, you know, final thought.
Yeah, that was a good one, though. Can you imagine the teachers union, I mean, they, that would blow their minds. They would go crazy.
Yeah, I just, you know, it it just, it it seems there's a lot that, there's a lot that's asked, you know, of a lot of people nowadays. And my sister's a teacher. My dad taught for thirty something years. My uncle and aunt in Washington, one's an administrator, another's a teacher. My, one of my grandparents, he's a teacher. I love teachers. My friends are teachers. I've sat in their classrooms, okay? Grading papers, helping out. And I thought to myself, oh, my gosh, you know, this is, this is a job, you know, this, there's some kid, you know, some kids and stuff, you have to have patience. You know, kids learn differently. There's a whole lot of stuff that goes on in there. And so I really, really respect our teachers. And so some people have said as well, she doesn't, she doesn't like teachers. She doesn't respect teachers. She doesn't support us. Oh, heck no. I support teachers one hundred and twenty percent. There's no way I would ever go after teachers. But what I do think is, is that you were hired to teach the subject that you're supposed to teach. And let's just do that. And let's leave religious beliefs and, you know, all this other stuff. Let's leave it at home to the parents and, you know, just go from there. And I think too, I think the pressure will be off of our kids at school. And I think the pressure will be off of the teachers. Where we can all just say, hey, I'm here to teach you history today, you know? And just go from there. Here to teach you math and nothing else. There's no outside noise. And I just think that it would just be such a less stressful environment.
Yes, for everybody, kids, teachers, parents. Just go back to the golden rule, somebody wrote here, Kristin, Christina wrote. What happened to the, just the golden rule? All right, Leandra. Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate. I've learned a lot from now talking in a little bit quieter setting here. And then I support you one hundred percent. If there's anything I can do to to help you, I'm more than happy to do that. And again, I'm going to just tell the people that are watching, if you know anybody that lives in the Yorba Linda area, Orange County area, it doesn't matter. This, just share it with people who live in Orange County because I think this is an important message. And sure, somebody will know somebody and let's get Leandra voted in to the school board because we need a a voice from the conservative side of things. That's just a really good thing to have on the on the board to help it be more balanced for the benefit of everybody involved. Like we just said, teachers, children and parents. And let's get our act together. Jeez. All right.
One more thing.
Yeah, of course.
I have in Area One, I'm in Area Three in Placentia, Yorba Linda. In Area One and Two, I have a firefighter who's also running, conservative, Sean Youngblood, and then Marilyn Anderson in Area Two. And we're all on the same platform. We all have the same views. And so they would really appreciate all that support as well.
Yeah, let's get their names one more time.
Sean Youngwood, Placentia, Yorba Linda School District, Area One. Marilyn Anderson, Placentia, Yorba Linda School District, Area Two.
And you're Leandra Blades.
And I'm Leandra Blades.
All right, hell, what's the next, what's the next rally? What's, what's the title of the next rally? Do we have one yet?
Yeah, so nine eleven, because, you know, we're kind of every two weeks and it happens to fall on nine eleven. So our thought, we're kind of kicking around some ideas right now. We're kind of thinking maybe a patriotic car rally through the town, kind of changed up a little bit and then ending where a normal rally is. And then maybe, you know, doing like an hour long rally there. Kind of want to change it up a little bit, you know, it is, nine eleven is huge. And, you know, I feel like we should really give it the respect that's due. So we're kind of working on that. Trying to see if it'll work out, if you have enough interest, you know, in the car rally or people did, might just want to go to the rally location and kind of hang out. Because as you've noticed now, it's kind of like a big social gathering as well. So I don't know. But, but yeah, so we're working on it, but it'll be nine eleven, probably around five.
All right. And if you want to see more about that group, go to the Yorba Linda Uncensored. It's a group on Facebook. Yorba Linda Uncensored. All right, Leandra, thank you for coming on tonight. I appreciate it. If you wouldn't mind sticking around, because after everything plays, you and I will still be able to talk for just one second.
Okay, perfect.
All right, my friends, we'll talk to you later. And we will see you on nine eleven at the rally. All right, take care.